Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. Before we stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And before we start this evening's meeting, I just want to let it be known that Jeff is not joining us this evening. Well, he is joining us via remote. So with that being said, all votes will be done via roll call vote in order to capture Jeff's vote. First things first, looks like we have a public hearing. Pursuant chapter 138 and chapter 140 of Massachusetts general law, a public hearing will be conducted on Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Eldon F. Moreira Board of Selectment Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, on the application for new wines and malt beverages on premise liquor license for Vineyard Farm Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Vineyard Farm located at 175 East Center Street, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Interested parties are invited to be present and to be heard. Signed, Board of Selectmen, Jeffrey P. Ryan, Chairman. All right. How are you all doing?
Awesome.
At this time, I'd like to intitate a motion to open the hearing.
Make a motion to open the hearing.
I'll second. Roll call vote. Perez, yes.
Lee, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Right on. Looks like we have an open hearing. All right. Vineyard Farms, correct?
Yes.
All right. What is it? Yep, we've been here a couple times, so what is it we're trying to do now?
So last year, we ran Beer Garden for the summer.
Yep.
We did a day permit for the beer and wine, and it was much more successful than we expected. We had no cases where in 2023, a whole family would show up for their events, and they'll be there like for 20 minutes, half an hour, and all of a sudden, they're leaving because the husband wants to go home and have a beer and watch a movie or something. And so quite often, people say, if we get a beer, we stay longer and so forth. So we talked to Shovel Town Brewery, and they came in last year throughout the summer, and we did the Beer Garden. And then we got the women telling us that the year before, they had to drag their kids out of there, and last year, they had to drag their husbands out of there. And then you have a lot of families, like from other towns, they'll come and meet at the farm and hang out, and so it was extremely successful, and it's a really nice crowd, and they were able to enjoy the animals and the farm, and we give people pickled flowers and pickled strawberries, blueberries, and all those things. So it really complemented what we were doing. And the Beer Garden is something that a lot of the farms around the United States are doing right now to kind of help to sustain the farm, because, I mean, like last year, we lost everything we planted on mid-May because of the late frost.
Yep.
And so a lot of times, having things that people can do at the farm. And also, it is a great service for the community, for people to have a place where they can go and hang out and--
And be outside.
Yes, and be outside. And there's no cover charges to get in. People come in, and if they want to just sit down and enjoy the beer, they can. If they want to have a beer, they can't. And but yeah, so it was extremely successful. We did movie nights, and the biggest challenge for the movie nights was that on the summertime, the sun doesn't set until about 8:30 at night. So the movies would run until around 9:30, 10 o'clock. And we did some on the fall that was started at 5:30 and ended like at 7:30, but then they got to call for people to be outside. And yeah, so that's it.
Well, congratulations on thinking outside the box and coming up with ways of keeping that farm over there successful, right? Jeff, I don't want to take away from you on the phone. Did you have any additional questions?
I do have a couple. One is, David, I think point of clarification as we move forward with this. Traditionally in the past, obviously, the farm has--Shovel Town has come out, Shovel Town's applied for the permit and done beer at the farm. Now that we're changing, I'd rather make sure the farm understands, unless it's different, that they need to purchase from Shovel Town. It can't be Shovel Town coming out and selling their beer, right?
Yes. Jeff, and just to clarify, Shovel Town is present in the room?
Right, but I think we need an--the farm will need an invoice--
Yeah, correct.
Saying they purchased the product, like it's only--
Correct, and we have in all our TIPS certified services and also our own insurance and everything as well.
And then sounding, I love what you're going to do, and first, let me apologize. I'm left there. I'm hopefully on the back end of the fluke. Didn't want to share that with you tonight. But with that, I think you're probably going to need an entertainment license as well, based on what you've said, so I'm going to just throw that out there.
Okay. Yeah, for--so that's the next person. But before we get into the alcohol portion, before we take a motion for a vote, I want to just ask, and this is something we do for everyone, do you have any questions on the alcohol policy or the policy that we have set forth in this town?
No, me and Dee Dee read it a couple times, and it's very straightforward.
Okay. I want you guys to understand, please, if you do have any questions, feel free to reach out to this board or the police department--
Sergeant Reagan, yeah, we spoke with him, and he was very helpful as well.
Very well. Please reach out if there's ever any questions. I'd rather you guys ask questions than there be a problem in the future, okay? Have you had a license in the past? And not that it matters, but okay.
Yeah, so we had a day license at the farm with Shovel Town.
Okay. Yep, understood, and it sounds like you have a good mentor to go back and ask questions to as well. So thank you for that. I just want to make sure that we don't have any future incidents. Marcy, you have any questions?
No questions. I just love what you're doing there, honestly. I haven't had the chance to attend any of your events, but I do look forward to trying to get to some this summer. I really love what you're doing there, honestly. Yeah, seriously. I will be there. No, honestly, I really love what you guys are doing. I really love that you're trying to attract families and you're doing the movie nights. I think that's a great addition to the town, so I'm really in favor of that. And I would really, just to stress what Mike said, if you have questions, you've got to ask us. Come back to us, you know, ask any questions if you have any issues, you know, just let us know. We want to work together, but I really do, I love what you're doing, so I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Can you pull up ahold of you?
I'm good.
Yeah, you're all set, Jeff?
Yeah.
So the only thing I would ask is for you to provide the board, there is not a sketch at this point as to where you're planning on putting your stanchions for the Beer Garden. Could you just instruct the board as to where you believe it to be? Because we will have to capture that as part of the license.
Can you get to the page?
Can you just point it out?
Okay. Yeah, so the Beer Garden is going to start here, and it's going to be served only here, like we did last year.
Yep.
And so it's going to be a fence from here to here, and then over to the flower garden, and back there, and then past that tree, and over this way.
Okay. So the purpose of the question is just to make sure that you know, we love what you're doing with the farm. You just, it can't have alcohol throughout the farm, a maze, that type of stuff.
Exactly, yeah.
And if you're looking to do that, then you need to come back before the board, and you will have to amend the license at that point.
Yeah, so it's, this over here, it shows the fenced areas that we're going to have, and it's going to be one entrance and one exit, and both of them are going to have a sign saying, no alcohol beyond this point.
Great, no, thank you, because I meant to ask that, but thank you, David, yeah.
And then off topic, I foresee parking being an issue. I think there was a couple times last year, and 106 could be a little bit of a treacherous trek these days. So just off topic, I don't know, you might want to start thinking, it sounds like more people are going to start coming into this event, so you might start looking into different areas for parking, just to alleviate some of the flow and make it easier in and out.
Yeah, so last year, no, 2023, we didn't have someone minding the parking, and there was people that parked at the road. But last year, we actually put in signs, no parking on both sides of the road, and we had people, three people minding the parking, and we were able to organize the parking. So not a single car on the road last year. But I remember with 2023, there's, I don't know why people would park on the road while they're still parking side. So we had people on the gate, and we were telling people to come in, come in, and we did have, and the one thing we did at the business event, we actually had reservations only, so we were able to block people, too many people coming in at once, and that's kind of like the goal. And I mean, the farm is big enough, because for the Beer Garden, we do have enough space up front to serve the people, but if we're going to do like pickled flowers and stuff like pickled blueberries, more towards the end of the farm, so they'll drive over there to go pick it. So yeah, so it's kind of like, I mean, the farm is 74 acres, and like with the corn maze, we had people driving towards the corn maze before, and some people, they wouldn't do the, how do you call it, the hay ride? You know, they'll park them on the front, but a lot of people chose to drive to the corn maze, because it's about like 700 feet towards the other corner of the farm, because that was a big event for the corn maze.
Thank you for being cognizant of that. At this time, I'll intitate a motion for, to approve the beer, the beer and wine license.
And the only thing I'll say is, because as she mentioned about parking, so it's also going to be subject to site plan review. Either the ZBA or the planning board will do it, we're not sure which yet. They've been, and the applicant's aware. So it'll be subject to site plan review, all inspections, and any outstanding documents.
All right. Make a motion to approve the application for new wines and malt beverages on premise liquor license for Vineyard Farms Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Vineyard Farms located at 175 East Center Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. As presented, pending site plan review and all of that stuff.
And I'll vote in favor, and Perez, yes?
Lee, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Right on, congratulations.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second the motion to close the hearing, and we have to vote again?
Yes.
Perez, yes?
Lee, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Right on. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
First thing on the agenda is to vote to ratify Nicholas Iafredi's--
You're so close.
Really close, wasn't it? Iafredi's employment and contract as inspector of the building zoning enforcement officer. Nicholas, how are you?
Good, how are you?
All right. This is your time. Is there anything you want to tell us about? I feel like-- It's up to you. You want to get a close--
Come on up.
Yeah, you can sit right in that second row.
No pressure.
You've got new boots on and everything.
Yeah, shh, don't tell anybody. So I'm Nick Iafredi, currently working as the building commissioner for another local town of Norton, have been there since 2019. Saw the job posting, thought it was an opportunity. Born and raised in Bridgewater, so right next door, and I'm super excited to come to town and hopefully get along with everybody and make it work.
All right. If you don't get along with everybody in this town, might not be the town. We'll be fine. No, it's, absolutely, I think you know Mr. Moore?
I know him very well, yeah.
Mr. Moore, he has been kind of running the ship over there for a few months, and I had a brief opportunity to speak with him, and he speaks very highly of you, and both you and your father.
Good.
So--
Appreciate it.
I'm pretty excited to see you coming on over here. I don't know you personally, but I'm pretty excited for this opportunity, so go ahead, Ms. Marcy, you have any questions?
No questions, everything I've heard is good. Yeah, so I'm looking forward to getting to work and doing it, yeah. No, everybody, everybody's really excited that I've talked to. I've heard all good things, so we're really excited to have you.
Means a lot, thank you.
Jeff, you have anything?
No, I guess I'd echo a little bit. I know in the past, the building inspecting, building inspector or inspections, I received a lot of calls and complaints, and since David has taken it over, those have gone to none, and I'm excited to get somebody in there permanently and keep that streak going. So thank you.
Hopefully, we keep it that way.
Yeah, no, and I'll be honest, don't be afraid to be a little bit progressive and come up with new plans and new decisions in the department. Like the board that hired you, we had, I had no effect on it, none of us did, and the board that hired you, you know, obviously spoke very highly of you, and I think it's time for the department to have a really good, strong leader in it and make the appropriate decisions as appropriate, you know what I mean? So I'd make a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to ratify Nicholas Iafredi's employment and employment contract as inspector of building and zoning enforcement officer. David, is that--
Yep, that's good, and just so you know, it'll be effective on March 24th.
Effective March 24th, 2025.
I'll second, vote in favor. Perez, yes?
Lee, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Right on, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Me too. See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any questions, reach out. You need anything.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got a long commute? Yeah, like 12 minutes. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night, Jeff, Dave.
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah. Next on the agenda, that's right on time, budget hearing--
Nope, B.
B, sorry. Vote to ratify Carrie Buckley's employment contract as officer manager for the water Will we be tabling that?
Yeah, if that's what the board would like to do, we can table it to next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to table that till next meeting.
Jeff, how do you feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, same, yep.
My apologies for going into C now, budget hearing for Council of Beijing.
Yes.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Excited.
Good.
Hello.
Hello.
You're going to stay there, you want to come up, you can do whatever you want.
Whatever, whatever feels more comfortable.
You can get close, stay far away. I love the turquoise.
Oh, thank you.
I'm all turquoise that would get today.
I favor it.
Love it.
The floor is yours?
The floor is mine. Well, here it is. Pretty much stuck with the percent we were given across the board. We did have some increases in hours for some of our part-time staff, and that's mostly due to the fact that we've increased programming and numbers. We're up 4,000 people from last year entering the COA for programs and activities, and that's because I hired the greatest activity coordinator in the world, and we're extremely happy about that. The building is busy pretty much from 9 to 4, except on Tuesdays when we get a break a little bit, yeah.
I've been meaning to stop, and you've got a lot of events on your calendar, and I want to go to all of them.
A lot of fun things, a lot of creative things, and also, the outreach department has increased their programming as well to help folks with some troubling times.
How many people are in that second line, the clerical line?
The clerical line, we have four.
Okay.
That, excuse me, that also includes the outreach assistant, and she would be increasing her hours as well.
From what to what?
Well, right now, she's working seven hours, so we'd be going to seven and a half.
So just to be clear, because I think a lot of people watching, you're not, you're not including, you're not adding anyone, you're just adding hours to the personnel that you already have--
Correct.
Currently on your team.
Yes.
You're just adding--
Staffing will remain the same as far as numbers.
Staffing will remain the same.
Yep.
And then line, the other line is 5480, which is fuel.
Yes.
And that fuel price has just gone up. It's alarming, it shows 20%, but it's a $500 increase, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's gone up because during COVID, we didn't use the vans. Following COVID, we only had one van, so we weren't able to get back to the day trips and the things that we did commonly. Now, we have two brand-new vans, and we'd like to do at least one or two special event local. By that, I mean maybe into New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, trips to the seniors using our own vans.
Awesome.
Sounds great.
Awesome. Yeah, I don't have any, yeah. Brian, Jeff, do you have any additional questions?
No, that'll do it.
Marcy?
No, no questions. I think it sounds great.
And I think it's appropriate to say thank you for everything you do and your staff.
That's a wonderful staff.
I, I don't get there as much as I'd like to. I do pop in from time to time, and every time I'm there, it's a good time.
Thank you.
So thank you for keeping, keeping the Council of Beijing looking awesome and for your incredible staff, because without your leadership, people wouldn't be sticking around, so thank you.
Well, thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
And 4,000, an increase of 4,000. That's incredible.
How many footfalls have we had? Let's see, 38,228 in a year of 2024.
That's great. That is wonderful.
We're very fortunate to have you.
Oh, gosh. Absolutely.
Well, I'm fortunate to be here. It's just an amazing place to be, and we now have a new hire. Allison is with us, Connie is retiring, you're all invited to March 21st to a little do.
I got that, thank you. Yeah, no, that's great. I'm really happy. That's good.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job there. That's really excited, that many people, like, that's, that's a large number.
It's spinning.
If you had told me to guess how many people you have in a year, I could not have gotten anywhere near that number. I wouldn't have guessed that at all. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Waste water treatment facility?
Well, we'll do, if it's okay with the board, we will do next the 7 o'clock, which is the planner. She is here, and if it's okay with the board, she is also going to present, you're going to do conservation in building or just building?
Just building.
Okay, so because we're ahead of time, if, so that way, just to make use of Tracy's time, if we did D, planner, and then we also did G, building inspector, we could do both of them at the same exact time?
Works for me.
And if there, if it's, if time allows now, I'm prepared to do the inspector of wires and plumbing and town hall.
That's, yeah--
Yeah, that's all--
All of them do the building.
Yes, we'll do it all together.
Hello.
Hello. It feels very close.
We moved it closer just for you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you're tracking, we are on page 46.
Yeah, thank you.
And we're going to jump around a little bit, so I'll just let you know as we go.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll start off with the town planner budget. Largely the same, just a couple of notes. So line 5111 is increasing, just a contractual salary increase. Line 5112, it's actually decreasing largely due to Karen Levin's retirement, so she was at a much higher pay scale, given the longevity. And then line 5140 is just the longevity will decrease again, because Karen has retired, and there's no other longevity there. So that is mine, my budget.
I have no questions on that.
Done.
No, I'm good.
Okay, the, next I'll do the building department budget. Again, largely the same.
Page 52, Jeff?
Thanks.
Okay, and so it's largely the same. I anticipate with the new building inspector coming in next year, we may have some thoughts, some different thoughts on it, but for this year, the changes, so line 5111 is increasing, just reflecting the new building inspector's salary, and line 5140 is longevity decreasing due to the departure of the building inspector, and he had been eligible for longevity. Other than that, there's no changes.
Be straightforward. No questions for me.
No, is there going to be, I don't know if we know this now, but is there going to be any additional with the new hire that you think we're going to need to add to this line?
You mean for clerical?
Yeah.
So all clerical is actually in the planning budget now?
Okay.
After we consolidate services, so that's why that line is zero and O.
And then how about any equipment or anything that he's going to be needing?
So largely, he'll be using what has been being used by the building inspector historically, so David Moore's stuff will kind of go over to him. And so nothing big anticipated. We did just have a grant to do some, to get some equipment for, it was through the Board of Health for the digitization project, so we've got some new equipment in, so I'm not anticipating anything.
Okay. Jeff, do you have anything?
No, I'm good on this budget.
I think I'm going in order, inspector of gas and plumbing. Is that, okay. There are, the only change in that budget is the wage increase at 3%, so that's lines 5111 and 5112. And the, sorry, if you wanted, if you have any questions on that one?
Nope.
I'm good.
Okay, and then the inspector of wires. So couple of changes here, again, lines 5111 and 5112 reflect the 3% pay increases for the inspectors, and then I'm proposing an increase on line 5710, which is the travel and phone stipend line, and this was, the wire inspector had a request just related to the number of trips and inspections that he has, and so I took a look. The good thing about the new system that we have is that data is a lot more readily available. So in looking at it, the numbers were pretty substantial, and I think it probably warrants the increase for the gas to account for those, for the increase in trips. So that is what that change is for.
Okay.
And does that exist on plumbing? I'm going back to plumbing.
That change was not made--
Not that I understand.
No, it wasn't made there.
Okay.
Oh, the line, the line exists there. There was no change to that one.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
No questions for me.
Okay? Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said you had one. Okay, and then the last one is the town hall budget, and so, again, largely staying the same. We did see an increase, we changed janitorial services, so there is an increase to line 5240, and which in part is due to the janitorial services increase. And then there was an increase for monthly fire alarm service that's managed by the fire department, but it gets allocated to all the different departments, so that's reflected there as well. And really, the running, the run rate right now on that line is closer to the actual spend of last year versus the budget amount for last year, so that was a better gauge, and then we added on the two increases, so that's the increase to that line. Other than that, it stayed the same.
I'm good.
Yeah, no questions here.
No questions. And if I may, I just want to tell the board, we're very, very fortunate. Tracy has done an excellent job. She's managed all the grants, which we have not been able to do in the past, but you know, this has been a trying year. There was the full integration of the consolidation of the building, that was done, then halfway through the year, the building commissioner and the secretary, both were no longer with us, and both left, and so through all of that, on top of getting prepared for the MBTA Communities Act, which is not easy, we remember last year, we did the ADU bylaw, and then Tracy has done an excellent job, she's managed all the grants, which we have not been able to do in the past. But you know, this has been a trying year. There was the full integration of the consolidation of the building, that was done. Then halfway through the year, the building commissioner and the secretary, both were no longer with us and both left. And so through all of that, on top of getting prepared for the MBTA Communities Act, which is not easy, uh, remember last year we did the ADU bylaw and then the state decided we want something different, so she's working on that. She's making other changes, um, and we still have the ongoing Lincoln Street project. So I do want to tell the board that, uh, the integration of the department would not be as seamless as it is without Tracy. She's really doing a really nice job and, um, and I just want to say thank you, but I, I know all of us are really happy with you.
Thank you, I, I really appreciate that.
I, I feel like, um, exactly what I was gonna say, we're very fortunate to have you, it is no surprise, the amount of tasks that you are managing. I'm very impressed, I'm a very task managed type person and I'm very impressed with, uh, just because I don't physically see what you're doing every day, I know the amount of work that you're doing, we are very fortunate to have you, so I just want to say thank you, thank you, and thank you. Um, from every project and every presentation I've seen you do, um, I, I get more and more impressed every time, so we're fortunate, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I appreciate it. I agree, all of it.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you very much, and, and if, there's just one thing I wanted to share on the grant side, because I'll be sharing with the finance committee tomorrow night, just to give you an update on where they, where they fell this year. So, so this year, so we're talking net new grants that we didn't have before, um, it was just shy of two hundred thousand, so it was about a hundred and eighty, eighty-seven thousand, um, in new grants. So, um, that, a lot more researched and looked into and applied for and they're really competitive. But I just wanted to keep the board updated, um, and we're still managing last year's portfolio of grants that we got that were a little over three hundred thousand, so.
That's so exciting, that really is, and I was so happy to hear that the ADA committee got the grant for the police department to have that work done, so that was really exciting.
Yeah, it's good, it shows that the, um, the, the office on disability is pleased with the way we worked with them on the prior grant, so that was good.
Very impressive, thank you, and Amy, thank you both of you.
Yeah, I'll make sure I.
Nice, strong office there, I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Hope you feel better, Jeff.
All right, where are we jumping to?
E? Yes.
The Board of Health? Right on time?
Right on time.
Right on time.
How are you gentlemen doing today?
Good evening, how are you, great, yourself?
Marcy, how are you?
Wonderful, thank you.
Jeff, how are you?
Rob, I'm fine.
Hi Jeff, John Cruz here.
Hey, Jeff.
Oh, we, oh, we'll do the wastewater first, since you have it up on the screen.
Page forty-seven?
Yeah.
Forty-seven, Jeff.
Got it, thank you.
So we're seeking, uh, may I?
Yes.
We are seeking, um, additional funds in, uh, the line five-two-four-three, equipment repairs and maintenance. We're seeking, um, additional requests, um, because the cost of pumping is, uh, just getting more and more in, uh, we have our systems, we have all the schools and all the tanks pumped, um, in August. In August, um, of twenty twenty-three, it was twelve point nine cents a gallon, um, last August, it was fourteen point nine cents a gallon. And so for this, for the next fiscal year, I forecasted a sixteen point nine cent again, another two cent a gallon increase. Um, we pump approximately forty-one thousand, four hundred gallons between, uh, the high school, Spring Street, Howard, Roselle, the concession stand at the high school and town hall. So, um, we actually exceeded the budget numbers this year because we had a couple of emergency calls back in August. We had some pumps and some floats that failed, so we had them replaced. So we had two, uh, two emergency calls, a Bridgewater pump, um, and the filters, uh, and the, uh, the floats replaced to a tune of about eighteen hundred dollars, so. We just needed to go up in that line, um, the system's getting older, it's been online since two thousand nine. We have, our, our average daily flow was around sixty-one hundred gallons a day, so they do get it worked out, so we had to go up in that line item, um, unfortunately, just because of the cost of pumping.
It all makes sense to me. All right, any other questions on there, any questions, Jeff?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, line, uh, page forty-eight?
So this is the Board of Health budget, all the line items are remaining the same except for one, uh, line number five-one-one-nine, the health, um, it's contractual, uh, three percent that the, the board and I had lengthy discussions and that's what they discussed and came up with. And that's our only increase in that entire line, entire budget.
Keeping it simple.
Thank you for, thank you for that being the only increase.
Appreciate it.
We keep, we try, we try to keep things going to where they are, Jeff.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at all.
I have none, Mr. Casper, I learned a lot more about you over the last couple of days, um, things I didn't know.
You wanna share?
That, uh, no, he, uh, he, he does, uh, he does help out some of the, the towns around us, um, and he's been doing it for the tune of twenty-plus years. Um, so I, I, I thank you for, uh, for what you do. And, and John, I mean, I've never seen someone come to a house to do an inspection faster. I, 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 I just, I had my, I'm like, you, you guys and wire, I'm just, guys are awesome, thank you so much.
Take care of the taxpayers, that's it?
Thank you.
And Mike, if I may, I just, again, I want to let the board know, because again, this was the first year that we've integrated that office. And I want to say it now, since both Rob and Tim, our conservation agents, are in the same room, um, and they should both hear. Both of them are excellent at their jobs and have always been, but the integration of the office has gone very well, they're in the same area now. I think that everything that we had hoped when we started this project has really started, has really come to fruition, where they're able to bounce ideas off each other. There's a lot of osmosis that happens, it creates more efficiency in the office and, um, and so I want to say thank you to both of them. Uh, they have been a fantastic source of information, as they always have been, but to be in the same office, being able to assist, uh, assist residents and do a one-stop shopping. Um, I know that we have received almost no complaints from that, where we used to, but people go up and down the stairs. And so I want to say thank you to both of them, because change is never easy and they've done a fantastic job. And I honestly, like John just said, I really just think that it was, it's a much better service to the taxpayers.
Right on, thanks for being champions of change, we'll call it.
I love visiting your office, I get to see everybody all together.
It's, it's a nice working environment, we have a good team on the second floor now.
Yep.
And hopefully with the new building inspector, it'll be just as work, just as good.
He seems great, I can't wait to see how well it works.
Good sense of humor.
Yep, yep, Jeff?
I'm good, I, I second everything, I'm sorry, I'm just trying not to talk too much.
And I'm trying to make him talk more.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, John, thank you, Rob.
Ready a little ahead of schedule, conservation? How are you, sir?
Good, and you?
Excellent.
Thank you for that.
Your support?
That was great. Been a nice transition.
All good things, all good things. Whenever you're ready.
So forty-nine. Forty-nine, Jeff?
Only increase for the conservation budget is the salary, um, everything else remained the same, had no reasons to, to go up.
Simple.
It's pretty simple.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
I like that.
Works for me.
I like that.
I have no questions, Jeff?
No, nothing, I'm good.
No questions, you're good.
All right, open space?
Open space, that one, there was an increase requested. With Riverwalk expanding and the fact that, uh, open space committee is doing more programming, uh, they try as much as they can to get free donations for, just straight out donations or in-kind donations, um, but costs have gone up and they've found it difficult to make it fully work. So they were just looking for a little bit of an increase.
It looks like a seventy-five percent increase, however, uh, the dollar amount isn't very, very high?
Right, I mean, if they, they only went from the twenty-nine fifty up to five thousand.
Right. And then you guys have a bigger space now, right, the open space, uh, we, we have, because we have purchased a couple, uh,
There's some more parcels that they're using, they're trying to use the Scotland site a lot more, they've done two different events there this past year. And they want to do more down there, and this would help enable them to get more access to it.
Yeah, awesome. Awesome.
Jeff?
I am good, I like it.
Yeah, same. No questions.
No questions, and Tim, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Um, I feel as though a lot of people do not understand what you do and, uh, because of just the unique nature of, of, of what you have to do and how you have to go about it. I, I haven't, I mean, as you know, we've met, uh, because I was on the wrong side of a board, uh, one time, uh,
We always try to play nice at work with everybody, so I, I can say, come in and ask, visit us, and, yeah.
Yeah, we're on the wrong side of a board, but thank you, uh, for your professionalism.
Thank you.
And just so you know, there's one last budget that he does oversee, which is the tree warden.
Well, tree warden, my apologies.
Yep.
That there were no changes or increases at all.
Nothing going on.
Right on.
In the town meeting, we did change it so it can be appointed as opposed to elected. Right now, he is still our elected tree warden, so as he eventually winds down his illustrious political career.
Will appoint him?
Then, then the board will obviously make that decision, but I want in full disclosure to let you know that as the elected official, Tim is the one that is still overseeing and managing this very small budget.
As we've trusted you to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Town clerk?
Town clerk.
Yay.
How are you today?
Oh, I'm great.
How was the wedding?
The wedding was great.
Wonderful. Congratulations to the happy couple.
Yep. All right.
Page fifty-six?
Starting with the town clerk budget?
Yes.
So the increases in that are, uh, salary contractual, um, and then, um, just some increases in, uh, the ta- office supplies, because some of the, um, contracts that I pay for with vendors, they, they go, they've gone up. But otherwise, it's pretty much the same. Longevity went up for both of us, because we both are hitting our tenth year.
Congratulations.
Ten years as town clerk, I end my ten years of town clerk in April and Sharon's been, will be ten years in May in the office, so.
Oh, nice.
Yep. It went by like nothing.
Here's to another ten more.
Baby for Sharon.
Can't we keep you?
And then, uh, page.
I was gonna ask, the overtime, let's just do the elections.
Uh, that overtime line is the transfer station stickers that Sharon sells on Saturday, one month, what, in February, one weekend.
Okay.
So, uh, it, it went up because her salary line went up, so it, it had, her overtime increased.
Her rate, yeah.
Yeah, her rate increased. And that used to be in the treasurer's budget, but we moved it into mine just for the ease of it. And it just goes up a little bit every year to reflect her, her increase in her salary.
And then the preservation of records, has that gone up or are we doing more?
I'm glad you said that, I totally forgot about that. It's costing, the costs went way up.
Okay.
And so when I had the five thousand from this year, I, um, I couldn't get much done. So I asked for an increase to, um, try to get a little bit more done each year. I mean, we had to squeeze and condense and try to find things, because it's very expensive to, to preserve the records.
How exactly is that happening?
So it goes to a company called Coldfile, so they come in and they research, they look in my safe and that, we've been working from the oldest records upwards. And they go through and, you know, decide what they can do for what the price is, um, and then they take them off-site. They put them in, you know, special, they treat the paper, put them in special sleeves and, yeah, and then they return the books, so all preserved.
Yep, okay, I was wondering if we were ever gonna go digital.
How many, how many more, uh, years do we have?
We're still required by, um, Mass General law to keep, uh, a paper copy regardless of, like, a lot of this stuff is digital now, like the, a lot of the birth certificates and death certificates go back, um, to the fifties, they're, um, the births go back to the fifties, the death certificates are only back to like two thousand and thirteen. And they are on a lo- online system that we can print off a copy, but we're still required, um, but to keep a paper copy. Um, it's an ongoing thing, Jeff, as far as what has to be done, because everything, I mean, even though the paper we're using is much, and the ink we're using is in much better quality than it has in the past, that stuff still has to be put in special, you know, it has to be treated and, and, and preserved. So, you know, we have a long way to go. Um, I've gotten a long, a lot done and I've gotten a ton of the really old records done that are, that, that you have to worry about, because they don't have the same, the same use of paper and the same ink. So, um, they need to be preserved before they're worn out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for bringing that up, I totally forgot.
Absolutely, that's what I'm here for. I don't have any other questions.
I hope I have none.
I'm, I'm good.
So the next one is elections and registration, and that's gone down, because the, we only have one election, as opposed to three, the last budget. So you'll see it, it reflects that, it reflects a few, a little bit of increase in, um, well, it doesn't show in the office supplies, but it's there, because I had to increase a little bit for postage, et cetera, but because it's, everything's less, it still shows as a decre- decrease.
I'm good.
So all of that basically is just due to one election going from three to one?
Basically, well, no, I'm sorry, the election part is, the, the, like, election officials in the, the su- office supplies, but, but we also do from that is the census. We do the, the town census that has to go out every year, which is increasing, because the population increases. And then I have to do the street listing.
Yep.
So that, the, all of those come out of the, because that's considered part of the election budget, so that, that comes out of that as well.
Thanks for the reminder on the census, I have not returned mine.
Uh-oh. So sorry, I'll see you soon.
Jeff, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
And then the last one is the vets and veteran, yeah, veti- veterans and Memorial Day, that, um, has gone up, because the parade is in West Bridgewater this year. So it covers all the food and the, all the things that we need to do to have the parade in the town.
I, I'm on this board and I just want to say thank you for keeping us on, on track.
Oh, yeah.
I know that it is not, um, easy. Um, I, I, I know that, I, I know the amount of work and effort you put into not only this, the elections and everything else that you do in that office. I just want to say thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Pass my thanks on to Sharon, too, because I know you guys work hard, and you'll have a little bit of an easier year this year with only one election, I know, but that doesn't mean you're gonna work, you know, you're still gonna do a great job.
Parade in town this year, so.
They do a great job, honestly, I, I, anytime I have a question, anytime anybody has a question, I know that they can go to the town clerk's office and get the answer, so appreciate that, obviously.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and if I may, again, she refers to only three elections, one election, whatever, but this past year, there was physically more elections than on the calendar year, because Super Tuesday, that's Annie, local election, that's Annie. Then all town clerk, so Annie's Labor Day weekend gets ruined every single year whenever there's a state election, because they always do it the Tuesday after Labor Day. And now with early voting and vote by mail, she's also working those two weeks leading up to it. And then also, obviously, we had a little thing, a presidential election in November, um, and so, and then on top of that, Annie also moderated our special town meeting this year. So on top, I mean, you're entirely right, she did all of those and still handled everything else in the office, and she just does an unbelievably fantastic job.
Oh, thank you, I try.
Very delu- very lucky to have you guys down there, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Moving on to line J, right?
Yes, uh, I.
I. Line I, the mobile vendor permitting policy.
So, uh, town meeting approved the, a bylaw to allow for mobile food trucks to now be in allowed use in the town of West Bridgewater. Tracy and I worked on this literally for about four months, it's only one page, it looks pretty simple, it is now. Um, but you'd be amazed at whenever you're trying to do something new, how many little nuances there are. But you'd be amazed at whenever you're trying to do something new, how many little nuances there are because we want to make sure that it's as flexible as possible. And I will remind the board because this is a selectmen policy. And anything that's new, there are always unintended items that will come up. We can always amend this again going forward. But we thought that it was really important as spring is about to hopefully be here, is that, uh, people are gonna start asking for this. And there has to have, have some direction for the department heads, for the applicants. And by bylaw, whenever somebody does a mobile, mobile food truck on town property, it is the purview of the Board of Selectmen to issue that license. So, we envisioned that bylaw to include it as part of the transient vendor license, which we'll have to get to in a moment. But in the end of the day, this would be a mobile food vendor permitting process. Uh, they would go to the Board of Health, and then they would also come to us, again, only assuming if it's on town property. If it is not on town property, it is exclusively in the domain of the Board of Health.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Ryan, are you looking for a vote on this one?
Uh, yes, please.
I entertain a motion for the, uh, mobile food vendor permitting policy.
I make a motion to approve the mobile food vendor permitting policy.
I'll second. Perez, yes?
Lee, yes?
Uh, Ryan, yes?
Line J, approve the transient vendor licensing policy.
So, this goes hand in hand with what we just did. So, this is your exact policy minus the fact that we added a couple of items. One, to incorporate the mobile food, um, thought process because your original transient vendor license only allowed five per year. So, a vendor could only access it five times per year, and after that, they were, they would have to wait till the following calendar year. However, we know that there is going to be mobile food trucks at our summer concert series, which include, which exceeds five. And I also know it may also be at our homecoming football games or athletic events. So, we wanted to make sure that we can broaden it. So, we're using ten at this point because after looking at all of it, we think that number is safe. But again, the nice thing is this is a policy of the board. And it only takes forty-eight hours posting notice. So, anytime that we need to be able to amend it, we're forty-eight hours away from having the authority to amend it if we need to. The last thing is, is that we just included on the bottom to make sure that everybody was aware that they have to pay, that there would be a fee. So, we can't have mobile food trucks just coming into, into town. And they say afterwards, oh, I was here for two weeks. Oops! Um, and we have to have some type of enforcement mechanism. So, that's why that last paragraph was added, just so that way there's an enforcement mechanism, so people will abide by the rules. Other than that, this is the same policy that pre-existed.
I do have a question, and I think this may be more for Board of Health. I do know that there's a requirement for restaurants to have a Board of Health certificate displayed. Are we gonna have the Board of Health certificate displayed on the, on the food trucks?
So, I, I, I do not want to say definitive yes because I never asked that question. However, that display of their certificate falls under their food handling permit license.
Okay.
And so I don't know why it would be different on one versus the other. That would just be their general guideline. So, I feel comfortable in saying the answer would be yes, but in full disclosure, I never asked that question.
No, and, and I apologize because I just noticed it as I'm recapping, as I read this now. It states on here clearly that they have to have it in their possession as well as the, um, the transient vendor license policy, this form that needs to be signed as well as, um, the previous permitting policy. But I just, I was unaware if they, if they needed to have it displayed because I think it'd just be an easy way to just trust but verify type thing.
Yep, no, I'll, I'll check with the Board of Health. But since they have to do it for non-mobile, I'm assuming they're required for mobile as well.
And then I also have one question also. It says the Board may issue at its discretion transient vendor permits to nonprofit or charitable, charitable organizations over and above the limit. Do we have to, like, have a meeting and vote on that, or is that, like, how does that happen if, to authorize them to have eleven?
Yep, so even non-char, even charitable events, they still have to come before you, and there's a license request. So, when they lay out all of the dates, it'll be eleven. And then you'll have that flexibility to be able to go beyond ten. This has usually been in the past for, you know, like, um, Park Day or some event like that. That's a one-day event. We've not actually triggered it, but we just thought it was important that if we have local charitable organizations that want to participate, we're not looking to hamper them, or you weren't looking to hamper them when, uh, when you created this policy.
Jeff, any questions?
No, I, I know there's been a lot of time spent on this, so my only concern between the two documents is that there's, there's not a, shall not start before and shall not go later than. But I, to David's point, it's not hard to change this, so we'll see how it goes and go from there.
I think that's a very valid point. Yeah.
Yep, yeah, no, I mean, again, we're looking, trying to make sure that we have guidance for the people who are doing the work before it comes here. And guidance also to the vendors. Instead of saying may, so that way somebody doesn't say, oh, I thought, so shall obviously as well.
Yep.
So, but again, if there'll be, anything, anytime you do something brand-new, there's always the chance of unintended consequences, good or bad. And so we'll, we'll make the change.
Yep, okay.
Right on. Uh, I entertain a motion?
Uh, vote to approve the transient vendor licensing policy?
Second, and Perez, yes?
Uh, Lee, yes?
Ryan, yes?
I entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February fifth?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
I second. Perez, yes?
Marcy, or Lee, yes?
Ryan, yes?
Um, I entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes of February nineteenth?
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five for review?
I'll second, and Perez, yes?
Lee, yes?
Ryan, yes?
Communication and reports from boards, commission, and town officials.
So, before you is a retirement notice letter from Kenneth Berry from the DPW Department. I will let you know, uh, he will have been with us for over twenty-seven years at that time. So, you know, he's been a very good employee, long-term employee, and, um, but he'll be retiring effective this summer.
Wow, congratulations to him.
Can we send him a thank you?
Yes.
Kenneth Berry, thank you very much.
This isn't a backfill, right? Because we were, were plus one, so to speak?
No, we never did plus one, so we will have to hire for, for him.
Okay.
All right. I vote to accept Kenneth Berry's retirement from DPW on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second, and Perez, yes?
Lee, yes?
Ryan, yes?
Housing authority request?
Yeah, so, um, so whenever we have either town department, you know, school departments, they pull a permit, we don't charge them a permit fee. Uh, the housing authority received a state grant. They replaced windows. Uh, and when they replaced the windows, they pulled a bu, billing permit, and the contractor paid the permit fee. But he really shouldn't have. He just didn't know. So, the, we have a request here from the, um, uh, from the housing authority to, we're gonna say waive, but quite frankly, we're gonna have to reimburse because they did pay the fee. So, I'm asking for a board to, to allow us to be able to reimburse those fees.
Right on. I'll entertain a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve the housing authority request to waive building department permit fees.
Uh, Perez, yes?
Lee, yes?
Ryan, yes?
Correspondents for the public to determine a course of action, and we have no one here? Public comment period. We also have no one here. Town administrator report?
So, yeah, we've been working on budgets, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. Uh, the one FYI I do want to provide to the board is that we received a request from, uh, students that, over at Howard School to the open space committee, then, uh, to, uh, to make some changes and upgrades to the Howard School basketball court. You may recall that a few years ago, we received a town meeting funding for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be able to build and construct pickleball courts and to put a new basketball court there as well. With the advent of a potential new school, and then with pricing the way it was, it wasn't advantageous to actually redo that entire court. So, we have some money left over from just doing the pickleball courts. So, the children have asked, or the students have asked as to whether or not we could put up new hoops and, uh, you know, a couple of other items such as benches. Uh, we're thinking a couple of grand, two, three, four, maybe tops, um, do some painting, some line painting. Uh, Jeff is, is also chair of the recreational space committee that initially brought this forward, so I spoke with him. And from a transparency standpoint, because this article was presented by the Board of Selectmen, we thought it would be best to bring it here so that way you knew, um, and also if you have any objections, then obviously we won't move forward, but if there are no objections, we'll plan on using any funds left over to be able to do this moving forward.
I have no objections whatsoever.
No objection. I am a huge fan of having the kids play outside.
Yep.
No, this is, this is spot-on, and, and we held from doing anything just because we were unclear if the court was gonna be there in a couple of years just based on where a new school would be placed, so it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I think it's a great use.
So, hearing no objections, we will, um, we'll authorize payment to be able to move forward. And the next item, or the last item is, is just to let you know, your next meeting is March nineteenth. But it's gonna be a milestone for the board because, believe it or not, uh, that will be your last budget meeting.
Yay!
Uh, it is a little bit of a larger meeting. You will have the police budget in there. But you'll also have both of your schools that would be making their presentation. We usually, um, they have to have a public hearing, and so they're always the latest in the schedule. And then I'll also run through a whole bunch of other smaller budgets, including the Board of Selectmen budget, and another larger budget, which is our benefits budget. But we'll do all of those at your next meeting. That will be your last budget hearing. And that means your first meeting in April, on April second, you will actually be voting on the budget, and you'll also be voting on warrant articles at that point. So, believe it or not, um, at that, you'll only be a month to town meeting.
It's coming quick.
So, again, just a FYI so that way you knew where we were in the budget season.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
At this time, we are, uh, we're gonna enter executive session. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of conducting a strategy session for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the town administrator. This is a roll call vote. Perez, yes?
Lee, yes?
Ryan, yes?